All right, I'm going to start.
I'd like to open the Stan City Council Successor Agency Stan Housing Authority to draw a regular meeting on Tuesday, June 11, 2024.
Thank you. I will now give that vocal, Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Torres.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Van.
Here.
Mayor Proton by Chairperson Moore.
Here.
And currently Mayor Chairman Shaver is absent.
We are now going to recess into closed session. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. There's one item on closed session for tonight, conference of the council anticipated with implications under exposure, government could section 54956.92, number of potential cases.
And Mr. Mayor Proton, I'd also like to note that there are no public comments that have been submitted for closed session items at this time.
Great.
You go ahead and tap that down. Proceed to closed session. Thank you for your, if you're in the silent period, if you don't want to proceed into closed session, we'll return to open session at 6:30 PM.
Okay, I'm going to call over our scheduled city council meeting for this evening. We are just coming back from a closed session. The city attorney please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll go with the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Torres.
Here.
Council Agency Authority Member Van.
Here.
Mayor Proton by Chairperson Moore.
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Shaw.
Here.
If you all please rise and join me on red. Mr. Griffith, would you please?
To write that over your heart, ready to get. The pledge of justice to the flag of the United States of America, and to the power of the Constitution, hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Okay, we are item number eight, which is special awards and presentations. I have a proclamation declaring midsummer through early autumn of 2024 as wildfire awareness and prevention session within the city of Stanton. And if Chief, if you might just more comment a couple of words on it, I think that would be very appropriate.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, staff, city staff and those in attendance tonight. This month is, we're recognizing wildfire prevention month, for the state of California and in Orange County. It's my honor on behalf of Orange County Fire Authority to accept this in cooperation and partnership with the state. Wildfires, as we know, every year in the state of California are becoming more and more devastating. 2020 was the most devastating year in history where we had over 400 million acres of wildfires within the state, which was above the average that you only saw for a fire area average of 2.3 million acres. As obviously in the city of Stanton, we may be under the direct threat of a wildfire risk within these areas and parts of counties. But wildfires do affect all of us in the state of California as well as in Orange County. So it's our job to do our best to try to prevent wildfires within the county area and be in partnership to, because it impacts all of us. It impacts all of us directly and indirectly for those that like to go into the wilderness, hiking and fishing and camping. These wildfires destroy, devastate these landscape areas that we enjoy and take vacations on. And then as well, these wildfires can have a direct impact to us around the, our daily lives with insurance rates, heights, energy rates and so forth. The Orange County Fire Authority is taking a very proactive stance with wildfire preparedness and preparation in County of Orange. Recently, we purchased a third bulldozer to help enhance our ability to prevent wildfires, create fire breaks when there is wildfire in our hills. In addition, we've purchased recently two fire hot helicopters, which increase our ability of water drop capabilities between 50 gallons, one single drop to 1,000 gallons, one single drop. So this would greatly enhance our ability to prevent and limit the damage and destruction caused by wildfires in the county. So on behalf of Orange County Fire Authority, thank you for allowing me to accept this reward and proclamation, city, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
I appreciate your question. So let me read the bottom of this report down here. On behalf of my city council and myself as mayor, we do hereby declare midsummer through early autumn of 2024 to be worldwide awareness and prevention season throughout the city of Stanton and doing so encouraging our citizens and community who join me, become partnership and preparedness with increasing knowledge of proper safety measures and taking steps to protect our homes and businesses and prevent the sparking of wildfires. That would probably be for us to go camping, which we don't have that much wildlife area left in Stanton. Anyway, Chief, come on up and we'll meet you down there.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we'll be moving on to the consent calendar. We have items nine A through nine M. Is there any correspondence or do we wish to speak on any of the agenda items?
At this time, sir, nothing has been submitted, no longer.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to talk about any of the agenda items? Uh, go up again, your name, please.
Sir, if you could just speak directly to the microphone, your name, and then you have three things. And this is the item you're speaking on. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, I'm the Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Griffithson, owner of Great Scott Tree Care. And we have been providing the city, the tree care in the Grove the last 20 years. We've been in the city of Stanton for over 35 years and pretty much loving part of the city. There, I would like to speak about item number, what is?
It's nine I.
Nine I, nine I, thank you. About the award of the tree care, uh, next due to your place service. We have, we have, there's an opportunity for the city to do an extension on the existing contract, which is already in place. And we, we've been with the city today and through the last couple of weeks. We would be willing to extend our existing contract for the next two years without an increase, without a CPI increase in order just to be able to continue to work with the city because we, we're, we live in the city and our vehicles are right here. And we'd like you guys to consider if we, if you, if you keep the existing contract, which has an extension in place, you'll be over, we're almost 30% cheaper than going with the, with the new contract. So we ask that you guys reconsider this and, and hopefully we'll work, and, and they save the, save the cities some money and they have a company that's in your own backyard. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on any items on the agenda? Or the, the city council, I'm sorry. Okay, if not, close that for each other. And bring it back to the council. We have items A through, I said A. Two, two M.
I'd like to pull nine I.
I would like for nine H.
Second on that item?
I'll move the balance.
Second.
So shall we forget, we will follow to Mayor?
Yes. I'll endeavor to see how the, the.
Mr. Mayor, we will move through the consent calendar. We will move into the balance without item nine H or nine I. We have a motion by Mayor Shauer, a second by Mayor Proton Moore. I will now proceed to go follow. Council Agency Authority Member, yes?
Yes.
Council Agency Authority Member Torres.
Yes.
Council Agency Authority Member Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Proton by Chairperson Moore.
Yes.
And Mayor Chairman Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you. I will now direct item nine H to Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For item nine H, there is an administrative error that was made in the executive summary. Staff was overfilling and using a template from a previous staff report and caught everything except for the name of the company receiving the contract award. So to clarify, the title is correct. This was an award for professional services agreement to brighten the landscape services for citywide landscaping maintenance services. The recommended action is correct as well as along with the dollar amounts. If council prefers, we can certainly pull this item this evening and make that one correction. However, I have to refer to the city attorney. If council would like to take action and follow the recommended action, that is also the reason.
I have a question. Okay, Chief. Okay, so the report by the staff report is incorrect. And the action item has incorrect wording. Does that open this up to any possible problems from a legal point of view? I mean, if we're just one, that can be a critical error, but we actually have it on the agenda item itself, which is nine H. It also is in the staff report. Now both of those documents have been in circulation with the public for seven few hours. That being said, what do you recommend?
Uh, Mayor, Council, the Brown Act requires that an agenda item have a brief description of the item and the summary in order to put the public on notice of what's going to be transacted at a meeting, right? So here nine H has a correct title. It has a word of professional services agreement to brighten the landscape services. Uh, and then later in the kind of other summary, it has a different meaning. Um, you know, on the whole, it would appear that a member of the public would be aware that tonight's city council is considering the agreement, you know, potential agreement board to brighten the landscape services. So by far and large, it likely substantially complies with the Brown Act provision that requires, you know, a brief summary of the item. That said, again, this is if the council would like to have the item corrected and brought back that certain point as well by, under the Brown Act, it does have a brief summary of the item. They might believe that members of the public would be on notice that the city council is looking at the right new landscape services.
Okay, if everybody's comfortable with that explanation, I'm going to go ahead and move on. I'll endeavor.
I can find it.
Ready to approach? Anybody interested? Thank you, members.
Nine I.
I'll just say what I want to say. For the city's purchasing and contracting guidelines, section four eight one, I would like, sorry, just four point eight. I would like my colleagues to reject staff's recommendations and abandon procurement effort instead staff would continue under the provisions of the existing second amendment with Great Scott, executed on August 22nd, 23 with the term through June 30th, 2026, with no rate increases, as he said, denied affirmative, resulting in a cost savings to the city compared to the results of the RFP process.
So you can handle that. Are there real problems with that?
Mayor Council, there, the city of Stanton has purchasing and contracting guidelines. I believe that Mayor Proton there was talking about the process for an RFP, or the press proposal under which this contract was advertised. There is a section of four point eight, and then subsection nine, and then another four, one second, well, wait. It actually provides that the city council has discretion to reject the recommendation. And if it's being put out, RFP, then the RFP has to be modified and re-advertised. Or another alternative is to abandon the procurement effort without for action. So, uh, Mayor Proton's suggestion is legally viable under the city's contracting guidelines.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So the extension, I had a chance to look into the original contract, but I want to make it clear to myself. If it's extended, it can go up to, is it June, uh, 2028?
2026.
2026. So that's two, two years from now.
Correct.
Okay, and what happens in two years?
White ball.
No, if this thing runs out in two years, what happens?
Oh, um, are we on the second extension? Do we have, we utilize the?
No.
Okay, we have one more. We have one more two-year extension after that. That could take us to two.
Okay, so as the contract stands now, this can be extended to the first extension for a maximum of two years. And then at that time, it could be extended for another two.
I'm sorry, I began to spell.
Yes, it's June 30th, 2026. So that's, yes.
So now the rest is this year, next year. And does anybody know what the rate is right now? That would, I mean, what is, which are contractual amount right now?
The annual amount to feed is $100,000.
And so it's $100,000 and if we were to go with the new contract, it would be, I read it was $148,000?
The pricing is done on per item?
Yes, so if we were to go to the manual right now, it would be at $148. However, the way this contract's set up right now is, it's pretty much all a car. Me, we, right now, we're trying to catch up to trim all our trees from the last couple of years. So right now, we have our staff that's going out there and looking at the different trees, districts, and prioritizing which of the trees can be done now. So it's not, there's really no, yeah, scope as far as what trees get done every year. Right now, we're catching up. And so that's why right now, the 148, it's just, we, you know, that's the amount we could use up to during this contract. But doesn't mean we're going to spend all of the 148. It's just up to that, uses that flexibility to use that amount if needed.
Um, my personal opinion would be to, to go ahead and to extend the contract for at least for the next two years because in case we would come to fruition, we'd be sending about $50,000 each year at that point. Although I do, I did need, I think there's another caveat that we're going to have to take a serious look at. If this is up in just two years, we're going to have to do a tree inventory in the city because we haven't done one for a long time. And with the tree inventory, we'll know exactly how many trees we have. And hopefully within that two-year period, we'll have a really good idea of where our trimming costs are. So when we go out to bid, or if we were to go out to bid in two years, we'll be able to have a really good idea of exactly what bits would be going to come in. Give us a better knowledge of what people are offering us. Because right now, I don't think we have a very big tree count in the city because we haven't done it for eight, four, five years, at least the best I can imagine. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Is there any reason from staff's perspective that we should go with the recommended factor? This is our current.
No, no reason. I'm.
Okay, I'm agreeing to.
Well, I believe that the tree inventory included in the contract has no cost.
What is the tree inventory cost?
It ranges.
Yeah, it, I mean, just the tree inventory, I would say, I mean, so a tree master plan right now, we scoped out about 200,000 for a tree, a tree master plan. That's the tree, which includes a tree inventory. So my best estimate for that would be maybe 30 to 50,000 maybe, just because it requires a person to go out there and tag every tree in the city. And then also, you know, determine the species and then put that on the list. Uh, so we can quantify how many trees we have total here and the type of species that go with it as well. So it's just the time that it would take to somebody in it, put it in a GIS format so that we can get uploaded into our current GIS that we have.
So what would that still want?
Excuse me.
So we can include the update for the show report that they provided and request complimentary approval?
Well, I'm going to make, I'm going to, I have to second your motion with this cabinet.
Okay.
I would like to go ahead and extend it for the extension that we can have. I want to make sure that there's no additional increase in cost for the next two years under the original contract. And also, I would like to add, if we could somehow get the current tree operator to be the inventory for us at this cost now.
Yeah, including the next report. That way it's more on. I'll second.
That's something we're suggesting that they have to agree to, including here. And if they don't, what, are we still on terms?
Well, we're doing it. Let's ask.
Mayor and Council, um, you know, this is, what's on the agenda right now is the RFP. And, you know, really the council's decision is to make a decision on that RFP. And so in terms of negotiating amendments to, you know, a different contract, that would have to be normalized at a, at a, so really the, the action tonight should be action on the RFP. Having what is on the agenda.
Okay, so I'm going to put same motion. Two years at the original negotiator price with no increase for the next two years and then also requirement that they, they leave him.
He just told us that we can only take action that's on the.
No, I'm not taking action. I'm asking on the vending.
If you're, so it's certainly the, you know, direction of staff, you know, in addition to the two-year contract amendment extension that is part of, you know, as part of the original contract. To direct staff to approach Great Scott with that request.
Okay, we have a first and second on call. Present.
You want to see what comes?
Because it looks like we're going to shoot.
Go ahead.
We have a motion by Mayor Shauer, a second by Mayor Proton Moore. I will now proceed to go follow. Am I correct in the motion and the second by Mayor Shauer, second by Mayor Moore? So to clarify, the motion is to direct staff to extend the contract with no increase to the rate and ask for a tree inventory. Not as a motion.
No.
What is the motion?
There is an existing amendment that is currently in effect right now, but technically the term goes through 2026. And that existing amendment does not allow for any rate increases already. So I believe the motion Mayor Proton made was to, I can't remember the exact technical reading, but was to technically refuse the staff recommendation, stay with the existing amendment, which does not require any change on behalf of staff or the vendor. And I believe they made a direction to staff to request the tree inventory.
Right.
All in.
Okay, who, 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 any others? Okay, go ahead.
So again, we have a question, Shauer, Moore, and I will now proceed to go follow. Uh, Council Member Van?
Yeah.
Council Member Torres?
Yeah.
Council Member Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Moore?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our next item. We are now at
Item ten.
Which is public hearings.
We have none.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council at this time?
I will reserve that for my proposal.
All right, we are now at unfinished business. This will be the adoption of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 operating and capital budget given by the city of Stanton and Stan Housing Authority.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and those in attendance, both in person and virtually. Tonight is a continuation of our budget, proposed budget for next fiscal year that was introduced at our May 14 meeting. The revised proposed budget document is included in your attachment A to this packet. As a result of the decision packages the city council approved on May 14, this chart represents all city funds comparing them for what was presented on May 14 and what is presented in tonight's agenda report. So, um, all city funds represented revenues and other funding sources exceeding expenditures by 1.4 million. And after accommodating the decision packages, that excess is now $725,420. I want to point out that expenditures from the decision packages increased from 45.9 million to 15 million. That's an increase of about 4.2 million. And that increase is being funded by a number of things, mostly from other funding sources, which are available fund balance. So we have about more than $2 million being funded from our general funds, special projects, assigned fund balance, 1.1 million being funded from our public benefit fees, also developer agreement fees that we've accumulated thus far, and 240,000 being funded from our fund balance of our unification fees, which are funds that we have accumulated thus far. So attachments B of your staff report is the resolution to adopt the citywide operating capital budget for fiscal year 2425. This chart just highlights the differences between May 14 and tonight of the general fund only. So when we presented the bottom line to you, So when we presented the bottom line to you on May fourteenth, our revenues over expenditures was approximately one point one million. You had a list of decision packages to be funded by the general fund. And as a result of that, our revenues over expenditures for next year in our general fund is over five hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. I want to point out that expenditures are increasing a little over two million. And most of that is being funded by the general fund assigned fund balance. The next page is going to highlight the detail of the expenditure increases. This is kind of tiny, but it basically combines the two slides we presented on May fourteenth. We have one slide that said decision packages to be funded by general fund special projects. And we had a slide that said to be funded by the general fund. And if my eyes didn't fail me, I tried to present this in ascending order from most expensive down below. So this represents the two point six million dollars in our general fund expenditures. And most of these big dollar amounts at the top are being funded from the general fund special projects. I do want to point out that the cost of living increases in the salary market adjustments right here. We did adjust the proposed budget based on staff, council's direction for salary grades one A and one B, which is our part-time staff, that cost of living increase is two percent. And for full-time staff, it is five percent. The next slide compares our general fund reserves and available fund balance. Between May fourteenth, it was thirty two point nine million, which is a hundred and four percent of our general fund operating expenditures budget for next year. And after tonight's proposed budget, it is thirty two point four million, which is a hundred and one percent. Still above average to what the average local government in California might have in those percentage levels. The capital improvement program also increased by approximately one point nine million between May fourteenth and tonight. This increase is broken out between three items that the council approved. One, we added five hundred thirty five thousand dollars to our existing citywide street replacement sign program to be funded by public benefit fees. That is what we're calling branding implementation project number one. Two, we added five hundred and sixty five thousand dollars to a new CIP project called Stanton Central Park Tennis Court Renovation. That will include pickleball courts as well. And then three, we funded a capital improvement reserve from our beautification fees and our general fund special projects, assigned fund balance of seven hundred eighty thousand dollars to be used as needed as many of our existing capital projects are moving to that construction base. So that is their spending set aside in case the actual construction cost of those projects exceeds the engineer's estimate. That's included in our existing CIP plan. Because we have a separate resolution in attachment C just for the housing authority by itself, I thought it'd be prudent that we have a slide about the housing authority. Not much has changed from May fourteenth to June eleven. The nominal change in expenditures is really the impact of the cost of living increases for the staff who are partially funded by this fund. Just to comment on our fiscal year twenty four projections compared to our twenty four, twenty five proposed budget. Overall, revenues of the housing authority next year are about twenty two percent lower than our current year budget. That is as expected because just like the general fund, the housing authority fund has a pretty large investment income budget this year due to the high interest rates that we've been receiving in our portfolio. And just like we didn't want to do that for the general fund, we didn't want to do that trend next year's budget. Also, we do have about a six percent decline in our tenacious rental income in next year's budget. And that is to be expected as residents are moving the property. Logically, we'll be receiving less income. Expenditures between twenty four, twenty five and then our current year budget is decreasing seventy percent. Primarily, if you recall, back in February, when we modified the housing authority's twenty four budget, we added over four million dollars of expenditures for relocation payments for those tenacious residents. We're probably not going to spend, not probably, we will not spend all of that four point two million by June thirty, twenty twenty four. So we do expect to reappropriate all that unspent money next year. So when the city council or the housing authority board approves tonight's resolution, we will be funding next year's housing authority budget with approximately five hundred and forty one thousand dollars of available fund balance from the housing authority fund, which will mean that the estimated fund balance in the housing authority fund by June thirty, twenty twenty five will be approximately four point seven million. And that is again, when the successor, when the redevelopment agency dissolved and this housing authority was created in twenty twelve, we knew that this was a finite entity. At some point, all of the reserves would be spent and this entity would probably not exist forever. Those are, aren't any, you know, ongoing revenues going on into the future. Once the residents are gone, that's the revenue. And once the reserves are gone. So that is pretty much the proposed budget. We have, I think, what was our consent calendar, it was through M? I think I equal that in all of the attachments in this staff report because I have attachments A through N here. So we talked about attachments A through C. The next slide, attachments D through F. These are resolutions prepared by our human resources manager. And these are resolutions that have to go along with if the council approves, adopts our budget. So if the council adopts our budget, then the salary schedule has to be modified to include those cost of living increases and to include those salary market adjustments. If the council approves the budget, then we, the proposed budget has some minor adjustments to employee benefits nominal. For example, increasing our on-call pay from thirty five dollars an hour to thirty eight dollars and fifty cents an hour. Adding that cell phone stipend that the council approved on May fourteen for those public safety department staff who don't have a city provided mobile device already. And then lastly, to increase the maximum safety shoe reimbursement amount from two hundred dollars per fiscal year to three hundred dollars per fiscal year. So those are the things being modified in the employee benefits resolution, as well as the personnel rules. Because the personnel rules talks about some of these benefits. And then the changes to the position classification manual, which is attachment E. That includes modifying the salary ranges for the various salary market adjustments that were, that are, that are approved tonight, that were approved May fourteenth and the schedules adopted tonight. In addition, our human resources manager was on maternity leave last year. So we didn't amend the position classification manual last year for the three positions that had salary market adjustments. So she's correcting that here. We added a job description for a classification called accounting technician. It's not a funded position next year. It just gives the finance department flexibility. We currently have a senior accounting technician filled. If that position were ever vacant, we could recruit for an accounting or a senior accounting technician based on experience. And it gives us a little bit of flexibility based on what the market might be at that time. And then finally, the job description for the recreation leader was modified. There's one job duty that's, that's in the existing job description. That because it's in there, all of our ref leaders have to perform a full Form seven hundred, which is a lot of work for our city clerk. So by removing that one job duty, they are no longer subject to that requirement. So it'll make the whole Form seven hundred process more efficient. Per state constitution, we have to adopt, you have to compute the appropriations limit, which is basically, the state constitution has a mathematical process for how you determine how much of your general fund or how much of your citywide appropriations can be funded from taxes. There is a whole calculation, it's adjusted by the increase in population as well as inflation, which is a specific number provided by the State Department of Finance. So we computed that factor for next year. And our limit is eighty, oops, oops, oh, we're done again, is eighty two point seven million. And we are well below that, we are like fifty million dollars below the limit. So many, perfect, many agencies are, there aren't too many agencies that are right at that limit. Lastly, we have attachments H, J, and K. We have no changes to our reserve policy. As you saw from the few slides before, our reserves are well funded. They appear to be appropriate for our size and for the risk factors that the city of Stanton may encounter. So we're not recommending any change, although the policy does require the city council to review it annually, consider whether they want to make any changes. So you do have to adopt a resolution every year. Attachment J, again, this is in our policy, the city council reviews our policy every single year. Attachment I actually included red line changes that staff recommended. We utilized our consultant Chandler Asset Management, who's been our investment advisor for a couple of years. They had some red line changes based on changes to the California Government Code that tells us what we can and cannot invest in. So there was some modification language there. So we presented that in the red line so you know what was changing. And attachment G is the clean copy. The takeaway there is there's, we're not adding or changing the types of investments that we're asking council to allow us to invest in. So the percentages didn't change, the types of investments to invest in didn't change. Most of the changes in the government code are clarification and definition type things. Lastly, since a big chunk of our proposed general fund budget is our law enforcement contract, we have routinely included our county amendment to our contract in our budget packet. So we do have the first amendment of our agreement with the county in attachment K. So we're asking you to authorize the city manager to execute that. It's a little over four to million. The staff report included charts for how many positions are dedicated to the city of Stanton, how many positions are shared, regional positions. I do want to note that we are going down one position allocated to the city. So in our current budget, we have thirty seven, next year we'll have thirty six. That is because one of the office specialist positions will not be filled or funded next year. If you recall, the city received ARPA money in twenty twenty one, the council dedicated some funding. There were two temporary positions included there. One was an additional office specialist, one was a crime prevention specialist. So the office specialist is being unfunded, will be vacated by the end of this fiscal year. On attack, go ahead.
Are we having the same number of deputies though?
Yes, so we're just going from thirty seven total positions to thirty six. And the rejection is just the one office specialist.
We have no vacancies.
No vacancies in the deputies? I don't know, but I know we're paying for the same number of people.
Yeah, I think that, I would, I would rather not get reimbursed, I would rather have the deputy. Because it's important that we have the man, man come versus getting a rebate. Reimbate, it's very costly not to include the chef department because I think that has gone. But also the fact is that if you have this extension of a course of buildings that we handle.
Yeah, when you say reimbursing those vacancy credits at the end of the fiscal year, yeah.
It's a point of having a program, if you get credit back and you don't have the core force of deputies that we need to control this. This is.
Yeah. One last thing, this isn't, and this is bigger than attachment M, is earlier we talked about funding some of the CIP reserves or projects of public benefit fees and with beautification fees. The proposed budget document in attachment A includes three new funds. If you recall, we've been reporting to you in our month, in our general fund monthly financial reports. This type of a page that breaks out the general fund's total fund balance. And it includes all these fees from developer agreements, the public benefit fees, the beautification fees, and the neighborhood preservation fees. They have not been those numbers that we've been showing you on the reserve fund sheet, but they've been kind of commingled in here. And staff is recommending that we just separate those to separate funds for transparency purposes, easier for staff and council to see what's left and what is being spent. So our proposed budget has these funds in separate funds. So the last action item that camp, that staff is requesting is to authorize staff to transfer these monies that we have in our general fund that were from these developer agreements to the three new funds that are created in our budget. And so that would actually be, you know, an action we would take care of in our current fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. So that when we start the new budget year, July one, twenty twenty four, the cash is in the right fund. So that completes staff's presentation, happy to answer any questions. If there aren't any questions, we do like a motion to approve recommendations one through fourteen of the staff report.
I'll make the motion, sorry. I have a question. We are requested to trench for one point eight billion dollars in the goal to be.